All right, that was more than three minutes, I apologize. Hi, everyone ready? Are we good to go? All right. Okay, good evening, everyone. It is 6:48 PM and we're going to call to order the special called meeting of the Gallatin City Council. We'll begin with the roll call of, or I guess I should do the call first. This meeting is for the purpose of appointing a fire chief and establishing the initial salary. That's what we'll discuss at this meeting and nothing else. With that declaration, we will have Ms. Kipper call the roll for us, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell.
Here.
Councilman Alexander.
Here.
Councilman Thaun.
Here.
Councilwoman George.
Here.
Councilman Hayes.
Present.
Councilwoman Love.
Here.
Councilman Overton.
Present.
There we have a forum.
Thank you, everyone is here. We will now move on to public recognition on agenda-related item only. So, anyone may come forward at this time to speak on the item that is on this agenda. You'll be limited to five minutes. We ask that you introduce yourself and share your address with us as well. Thank you.
Mayor and Council, Todd Wagner, the Fire Marshal for City of Gallatin. I've been asked by Chief Townsend if I would to hand out some envelopes and then read something for him. So, this is addressed, it says, "Mayor Brown and members of the Gallatin City Council. Let me begin by stating how proud and honored I am to have been given the opportunity to serve the exceptional men and women of the Gallatin Fire Department as their interim fire chief. To the members of the Gallatin City Council who encouraged me and appointed me to this position, let me say thank you. As a lifelong dedicated firefighter, this position was a dream come true for me to be able to help build, encourage, support, and provide direction for the men and women of the Gallatin Fire Department. This is who I am. As interim chief, I took the opportunity to immerse myself in the day-to-day operations of every fire hall and each and every shift so I could see where the needs were, where the leadership was, and to increase morale. I truly enjoyed my interaction with these exceptional firefighters and staff. What I found in getting to know the dynamics of each and every fire hall and shift is that it is clear that our city is not dedicated the resources to the Gallatin Fire Department necessary to ensure stability in our employee base. Our firefighters, due to this neglect, seldomly stay long enough to build the trusted relationships necessary in a fire department, leaving Gallatin with a young, unseasoned staff that needs guidance and leadership, overall low morale, and a high frustration level collectively. Based on my interactions with all levels of the department's staff, I have a few observations to share. Number one, there is a general lack of leadership within the department. Number two, there is mistrust of the elected officials and particularly the mayor's office as the firefighters feel unsupported, unheard, and unappreciated. Number three, there is a lack of equal or competitive pay, making it extremely difficult to build and/or maintain a strong, effective content department. I started visiting and listening to the Gallatin firefighters on March 23rd, 2021, my first day as interim fire chief, in hopes of improving working conditions and raising morale. In this short period of time, I was able to improve some things. However, when even small requests were made to HR or the mayor's office, they were continually met with a resounding no. Even though I was able to achieve improvement in some areas, I was unable to implement the necessary changes because of the constant opposition I encountered. Without support from the mayor, not even a PhD will be successful in this position. The success of the fire chief will not depend on any level of education. It will depend on his or her ability to relate to the firefighters, communicate those needs to the council and mayor, and fight for the tools desperately needed to perform the task of a firefighter. Firefighting is not a position, it is a passion and a call to service for all the men and women of our department and all departments. These folks' lives revolve around service, pride of community, and a dedication of high levels of performance under extreme pressure. They deserve more from all of you. The people of this city will inevitably pay the price for your lack of support as bright, qualified people continue to leave the department. In closing, I would like to say regardless of my formal education, but based on my decades of firefighting experience, I feel I am as qualified as any other candidate for the fire chief position. However, it has become very evident to me that politics mean more to this council and mayor than what is best for our city. Therefore, I feel that it is best that I tender my resignation as the interim fire chief of Gallatin effective immediately. Sincerely, Tracy Townsend.
Thank you, Chief Wagner. I do want to repeat one thing for the record, since I was maligned in it. And thank you for the copy, I'm glad to have it. I was asked, I think, four, no, three things of Chief Townsend. The first was about the existing uniforms, he wished to throw them away. I said, "That is fine." The second thing was about, oops, sorry about that. The second was about turnout gear. We remedied that fairly quickly as far as moving some money so that you guys could order it before the next year. And the third thing I was asked about was, I can't remember what it was called, but it was basically where you give a supplement for someone who is moving up temporarily in their position, i.e. someone who is a firefighter standing in this engineer. And, and the problem there was, I could not make that happen. That's a council decision, it has to do with pay. It would require a process. And, and that's what I told him. I was never, and those were the only three, I think it was the only three times I actually met with him. And so, I don't feel like he got resounding no's from me or anyone else. We always want to help, it just takes a process. So, I am disappointed to hear that he won't see through the interim role because that leaves us back where we were, but that's not something we can address in this meeting. So, thank you, Chief Wagner, and thank you for your service. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Good evening, Mayor Brown. My name is Michelle Juvance, I live at 1335 Long Hollow Pike. And I've talked a lot about the fire department and building fire stations and taking better care of our firemen, giving them a raise. And I care about that a lot because when I, I'm sorry, my voice is kind of like, kind of funny right now, but when I was a little girl, my dad was a fireman. So, I think that might be why I care so much about this. So, basically, all I wanted to say tonight was that job interviews are a two-way street. You interview the people who were coming for the job that was up, up for fire chief, but they were also interviewing you to see if they wanted that job. And last week, I am concerned that what happened last week was really bad. It was a bad job interview on your part for the people who applied for the job because I'm concerned that they aren't going to have the faith in you that you're going to be willing to work with them, that you will want to work with them going forward in that position. And I really think that that's not good. And I think that you, you know, I don't know who we're gonna have as our fire chief, who you're gonna vote for tonight, I don't know. But whoever that is, whoever it is that's on that list that you're gonna vote for to be our fire chief, I think that you should, before you vote on anyone, make a public apology to all of those applicants and tell them that you want to work with them and that you want to support them. Because otherwise, why should they bother taking the job if the way that you acted last week showed them that they're not going to have support from the council? And you are the ones who fund, who approve the funding for the things that they ask for. And that's really important. So, that was all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak at this time?
Pascal Juvance, 1335 Long Hollow Pike. Like I said earlier, the conversation with Tracy Townsend, like I told him, that was not personal, there is a process to follow and that what the process had to be. And City Attorney made it clear to you all. And, you know, I want to commend Tracy Townsend for realizing what we have been saying for more than a year now. The issue with the firefighters, and he put it clear, and pay, and morale, and equipment. I was gonna go back on the rules, but I figure you got familiar with them. And last week, Mayor, you talked about social media, so you probably followed social media after, after the council last week. And like the citizen who came, talked before me, said, "There was an interview for you." There was few, I'm gonna read few of the comments. There is, I tried to pick up as many as I could, but there were, there were really too many to pick up, knowing that there were 11,000 people following that thread. Some comments demonstrate the weakness of the council as a body. What a clown show, this is an embarrassment. It's beginning to get rather comedic, that's just sad. What a mess, what a joke. Maybe if they considered this appointment like approving identity development, we could see some progress. That's a fun one. We understand that a rubber stamp is not applicable in this instance. His silence is deafening. And there was, there was pages of it. So, I gave a copy to the recorder if you want to read them. But again, that was an interview and hopefully we didn't lose some real good applicants. I was lucky enough to see their resumes. And there were people who were applying for that job. Wow, unbelievable quality and, quality and experience. So, I think we need to give them a chance and let that department thrive under new leadership and, and hopefully they will get your support. The support looks like you did ungive to Chief Williams of what he said in a paper. So, thank you for your time.
So, Lori Hay, or Lori Smiley, actually lived 2851 Green Grove Road in Hartsville, worked for the City of Gallatin. Just on a personal note, I feel compelled to speak to some of the statements that I've heard as the process to hire a new fire chief has unfolded. I've come to love this city, and I'd say 97% of the time, I love my job. I've been a public servant my entire career, all 36-plus years of it. And while I could easily make more money in the private sector, helping other departments, serve those that live, work, and play in this community I serve, is something I value over a higher paycheck. With that said, and meaning no disrespect to any council members, I must in good conscience say what is on my mind and on the minds of some others that have reached out. First, you've successfully hired three department heads over the course of the last 18 or so months using the very process some of you voted to put in place in which now some of you are saying doesn't work. What does that say to those you hired under that process? Thus far, it appears the choices made using that process have been successful, so why change now? Second, when the time comes for me to leave and you have to hire a new CIO for the city, I truly hope that you will rely on an expert panel to identify the candidates that have the knowledge, experience, education, or certifications, and vision the city will need to continue moving it forward with regards to technology. While you might be able to identify the qualities of leadership, organization, communications, et cetera, needed in a candidate for my position, again, no disrespect intended, I can, I am certain you do not have the expertise and technology that is absolutely needed to choose the most qualified. The policy in place now would help to ensure that for you. So arbitrarily repealing it now would be short-sighted on your part. Third, I have some question, I've heard some questions why a bachelor's degree should be required for a department head position. My daddy was a tradesman, owned his own company, and had no college degree. He gained his knowledge on the job over many, many years of experience and by learning from the best. He was sought out by the children and grandchildren of the people he built houses for years later because he was so great at what he did. I get it, and I realize it happens. But he constantly learned and got certifications in his trade, gaining invaluable experience year over year. As for me, I am proud of my degrees. I attained my masters as a single mom of four small children, working 50-plus hours a week on call seven by 24 by 365 with no family near to help, just very dear friends and the grace of God. I sacrificed, as did my kids, and I did it, and I use that knowledge every day. Department heads not only have to be knowledgeable in their field, but they need knowledge in many areas, like I mentioned above. And they have to keep on learning every day as the laws, regulations, best practices in their field, et cetera, continually change. College taught me how to do that. And like it or not, a college degree or specialized certifications are perceived to bring a certain level of professionalism to an executive position. If this were not true, why do so many parents so strongly encourage their children to get a college degree and so many others continue their education later in life, including getting advanced certifications? If nothing else, it demonstrates a level of initiative, ambition, and determination, all of which I think are excellent qualities to have in a leader and role model for those they manage. Fourth, at the meeting of May 25th, a vote for a new fire chief was deferred so that two council members who were not available during the interview process of the candidates being considered could have the opportunity to talk with them before voting. That was totally understandable and I believe a valid call. After all, how could one be expected to vote for who they thought would be the best candidate if they hadn't even spoken with them? Yet, just one week later, all council members were asked to vote on a candidate, none of them had interviewed. This, at the very least, seems hypocritical. Finally, and perhaps most important, I've been approached by many employees that have voiced their anger at what is happening. They've expressed their embarrassment of being a city employee as a result of these events, and several have even said they are afraid and confused. I've been asked that if policies that are in place to ensure they are treated fairly can be arbitrarily disregarded, what does that mean for them? This hurts my heart because I love our employees too. And just like it has been stated that employees are not, are not signing petitions or making phone calls in support of a candidate because they don't want their name out there publicly, the same is true for those that do not agree with those course of events. To randomly make exceptions to a policy you have voted in place and make the statements that policies are just suggestions is hurting the morale of the city's employees. If this policy is a suggestion, what about the others that you have approved and put in place? Like our personnel policy, the ethics policy, our abusive conduct, harassment, workplace violence policy, and the list goes on. Are these merely suggestions as well? These are the policies we acknowledge each year and have agreed to follow and expect our fellow employees and supervisors to follow as a condition of our employment. It brings structure to our, our employment and speaks to the kind of organization that we work for. They bring us a certain level of comfort. And arbitrarily setting one aside and one as important as hiring the best leaders possible at that hurts morale and again is short-sighted. I offer these comments up with the utmost respect for the jobs that you do. But mostly, I'm out of concern for the city and its employees and those we serve. This is not about a specific applicant or a name pulled out of a hat. It is about following the policy you voted in place. As we hear in almost every invocation given at the start of our council meetings, may God guide us as we make important decisions for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smiley. Counsel, I did let her go over time, I apologize. I thought you were about to wrap up, you weren't too far off. I hope you understand. Anyone else wishing to speak under public recognition this evening? Okay, I see no one else indicating they wish to speak. I will declare public recognition on the agenda-related item only closed and move on now to the agenda. And on the agenda this evening is the appointment of a fire chief. And before we move on, I just want to say a few words. I want to say, and I tried a bunch of times right stuff, so I, I kept going different directions, so I'm just gonna say kind of what I'm thinking. First of all, I want to say to all of you, I respect you, I care about you, you know I love you. Last week, that meeting was an anomaly. That's not how we typically act towards one another. I was embarrassed by it, I was disappointed in it. I know that we all serve with love for the city, certainly for our employees, for our fire department, and our citizens. And I think we all know how to do the right thing and put the city, our employees, and our fire department before each of our, I don't know, just, just, you know, personal, personal feelings towards each other in a moment of frustration. So, I'm hoping that we can move forward, make a good decision this evening, and give our firefighters a wonderful leader like they deserve. I do know we should all be so very proud of the caliber of applicants that we had and, that have applied because they were interested in coming to Gallatin and serving as our fire chief. I mean, it was really an impressive field. You know, we got three recommendations from the expert panel, but I've gone down through some of the resumes of some of the other applicants, and they're very, very impressive, even beyond the ones that we interviewed. It's just something that should give us all a great deal of pride in our city and, and the status to which we have risen and the caliber of leader that we can get. Now, I must tell you that Chief Miller has told me that he is withdrawing his interest from the position. I feel very bad about this. I feel like he was really misrepresented in a lot of ways. And I will always respect him as a very capable chief. I'm very glad that he serves in our community. Certainly, Sumner County is gonna benefit by him not coming to the City of Gallatin. But he is distinguished in his service, he is respected in the state, and certainly by our expert panel and other chiefs across the state. So, he will no longer be considered as a candidate for the position, but we do still have two other candidates that our panel recommended. And so, with your blessing, I'd like to move forward with discussion on those candidates and see if we can reach support of one of those candidates. I'll also add that I think whomever we hire and our fire department and all of our firefighters, employees down there deserve unanimous support of this council for whomever we decide to hire. I think that would be a very positive position.
Can I say something?
Yes, sir. Councilman Alexander is recognized.
Ladies first.
Okay. Councilwoman George is recognized.
Oh, well, thank you. Are we confident that the two that we're talking about this evening will accept this position if it's offered to them?
I am hopeful. Neither have withdrawn. I believe there's been, I know there's been correspondence with both. Neither have withdrawn, but they are concerned, and rightly so, about the support that they might have from this council should they be selected. Councilman Alexander?
Before we vote, I just want to say, if I offended anyone last week, I apologize for being honest, but I was raised to be honest and speak my heart and my mind. And that's what I did. And let me say to Tracy Townsend, I thank you from the bottom of my heart for lifting the morale in the fire department. A lot of guys had called me and talked to me about how Tracy would go in and take up holes and do things, just fit in with the game. So, I felt within my heart that he was a good candidate, and I just appreciate you, Mr. Townsend, for what you done for the fire, fire department. I'll always cherish the relationship that we had. Thank you. I'm ready.
Thank you. Councilman Alexander. Councilwoman Love?
I don't know if this is the time to do it, but I need to disclose that my son is a firefighter for Gallatin Fire Department, and this will not affect me personally or financially. I'd also like to say that my, I apologize too for anything that was missaid, but my motivation was purely through trying to increase morale for the fire department.
Love, anyone else or anyone ready to open some discussion on our remaining candidates? Councilman, Vice Mayor Fennell, I'm sorry.
I know that, that, you know, on the internet, some of that stuff is hurtful out there. And some, some of the citizens said that we didn't pay attention to what the fire people were saying. And, you know, I'd just like to say that I spent a lot of time at the fire department here in the last couple of months. And I know several of the other council members, I spent time as far as dinners or breakfast and trying to see what they wanted. And in the beginning, you know, it, it put out there, I've, I've known Tracy my whole life, but I never talked to him until probably four years from now. He is a much older guy than, than me in school. I was in elementary school and he was in high school. And at the time when we was trying to find an interim person, I felt that, I really felt that he'd be a good one to come in and be an outsider and try to get a grasp of the fire department. And I thank Tracy for what he's done. I think he done a good job, and I think it shows the, the number of firemen actually come out to support him. But I also like to say, I'm one of the guys that, that said and went through the interview process. And there's a lot of good guys on the, the list that, that I interviewed. And these two candidates right there, and, and in the beginning, when, when I, I placed them at the, at the top of the list, and I think I shared that with the mayor at the time. And so, I look forward to moving on and, and trying to get somebody that, that will actually be good for our guys. I mean, that, that's the main thing I think we want. We're all passionate about trying to find the right person to hire and to move this fire department forward. Somebody that will work with us and, and work with the citizens and be out in the community. And that's probably all I need to say.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Fennell. Anyone else?
Are we ready to make a recommendation?
I think, just, just for the publics, because they're, they're not looking at what we're looking at, I think it'd be good to give a description of the two remaining candidates. And I'm happy to do that, and you all can, can weigh in if you like. We do have two candidates that were recommended to us by the expert panel. One is from a large department out of Illinois. One is from a similarly sized department here in the, here in the state of Tennessee. Both candidates highly certified, highly educated, lots of experience. You know, not, different, but ultimately, I think, equal candidates. I think, you know, it's up to this council. I think what we're looking at is who do we think might be the better fit? And, and so, that's the determination that I feel like we need to make. I had really good interviews with both of them. There were different things that I liked about each of them. But Chief Beeman, the one that is actually from Germantown, he said something to me, and this was after I had met with all the firefighters, but he said something to me that just really resonated. And I wrote it down, I didn't bring it with me to the meeting, and I probably won't quote it correctly, but it was something to the effect of, you know, the fire chief has five jobs. That's to set a vision, it's to provide direction, it's to provide the resources, it is to offer mentoring, and there is a fifth thing. But I think that that's very important because he really kind of got the part about, you know, being a chief and letting firefighters find their path in the fire service. He told me, "I'm not a micromanager. I, I, you know, I let the firefighters do what they do. I help them, you know, pursue what it is they want to pursue." But also, Love, that he thought that mentor piece was important because I do think that that's something that we really need, especially with a young department. Now, I'm sure that Chief Ford feels the same way as far as mentors go, but we didn't speak specifically of that, so I shouldn't, you know, I shouldn't say that one believes that and the other doesn't. I just kind of liked his countenance. I liked the fact that he's from a similarly sized department with a very similarly sized budget to ours. So, he kind of understands the scope and scale of a city our size and a department our size.
Paige, I, I agree with you. The, the candidate from Chicago, I really liked him also. And my only feeling towards that candidate right there, he is so used to such a large city of Chicago. I mean, he's got an army of people behind him and a huge, huge budget. And when I asked him what type of budget he had, I was shocked. I mean, I was just shocked about that. And I think, you know, he would fit in. But on the other hand, when I talked to Mr. Beeman, and I probably interviewed him a little bit different than some of you other guys have, I mean, or D. I mean, or did, and I really liked him, but I asked him what some of his hobbies was, and I liked his answer. And I liked that he said that he likes children and spending a lot of time with them, and he likes to coach and Little League baseball and the basketball, and I felt that he was from a little bit of an area, like you said, that was comparable to our area. And he might, in my opinion, would be, I would feel a little bit easier to adjust to this size of a town and budget that we've got. And I don't know if we're making motions or not, but that's, I mean, I would make a motion to.
Well, I want to say too, because I gave Chief Beaman some accolades, but I think I should Chief Ford as well. I mean, Chief Ford is probably one of the top chiefs in the entire country. And I hope that if he does move to Middle Tennessee, that we might be able to use him some way in our city because, oh my goodness, he's a huge expert. But he is retired from that department, and it has been a department of over 5,000 employees. And I just think that, you know, it's two different types of chiefs. And the other thing that I wanted to mention was that our expert panel did originally, as you recall, recommend Chief Miller because of his Tennessee certification. So there is that difference between the two candidates. Not that Chief Ford, I'm sure, could get his certifications in the state of Tennessee, but Chief Beaman would have his, so.
I did mention to several people that I felt the fire chief from Chicago could, and wondered why he don't have a presidential appointment somewhere, because I thought he was that big of a fire chief and good of a fire chief. But that was my only concern, is moving to this smaller town.
Our expert panel looks like they ranked Mr. Ford second on the list behind Mr. Miller.
Yeah, they were pretty, pretty close in what their numerical rankings were.
I enjoyed talking with him immensely. He was easy to talk with.
Which one, Linda?
From Chicago. He was really easy to talk with and very, very knowledgeable, but as Paige said, he's coming here with a budget of over $500 million, and we are not going to be able to even compete because our town is not like Chicago. That was why I hesitated on Chief Ford. And, but, you know, he will be, he was a wonderful one, I'm sure, to compete against everybody. He was a great.
He's got a lot of experience.
Yes, lots of experience. Maybe not so much in a small town, well, not so small town anymore, but a small city.
Compared, compared.
I'd like to say something on this, too, my mayor. My issue with Mr. Ford is he's retired, and this is a job of convenience for him. And anybody with grandkids will understand that he wants to be around his grandkids, but is that the reason he wants the job, or does he just want a job or something to do? Now, Mr. Beaman, it's a promotion from him. He's an assistant chief. My biggest disappointment is we don't have somebody in existing departments to step up and take this job.
I appreciate you saying that. That was something I intended to say as well, because I wanted to say clearly that from the beginning, I really wanted to find someone from our community or from our department. And we haven't been able to do that, and I regret that. Those would be my first choices.
Well, with that said, I think Mr. Ford would be a good guy to go to maybe for some advice. He's seen things probably some of these guys in Tennessee have never seen, especially with that size of apartment. He would be good to have a conversation with after we get the new chief, whether it's him or somebody else. But Mr. Beaman was my number one choice all along with the interviews that I had. And it's, he wants the job, it's a promotion for him, he's coming from a similar department. I think he's got more positives than any of the candidates have.
I make a motion to hire Mr. Beaman.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Fennell, a second by Councilman Fann. We are available to continue discussion. If anyone wishes to discuss further?
I think in our, in our resolution, we had to put a salary in there.
$125,000.
How much?
$125,000. I think that's what he's making now, based on public records I found.
And I like both of these guys. I think they're both really good, but, you know, I've got a problem with paying somebody that kind of money when we've got a 10-year public service chief that don't make $125,000, and you've got 40-year employees, department heads that don't make that kind of money. And I just don't see us starting one out at that kind of money when, you know, we've got, we've got 10-year public service guy that don't make that kind of money. And it just doesn't make sense, and you've got, you know, and I know we've got to address the bottom of the totem pole, but I just don't, I don't see us paying that kind of money.
That pay would be comparable with our police chief, and it is the situation that you are faced with, whether you're in the public sector or the private sector, when you are trying to bring in someone from outside, because you have your pay scale within your department, but when you're trying to attract somebody from outside, you are kind of paying for, you know, you can't, you can't attract someone if you're going to pay them less unless there's just some really unusual circumstance, i.e. they're coming here for some other reason. But, you know, compel someone to move here for a position, they're very, very rarely going to be willing to take less pay.
Did you say that's how much Mr. Beaman was making now?
When I looked, I did not confirm that with him. That was the number that he gave to Ms. Flood, but I actually found on public records search where he was making somewhere around that, maybe a year or two ago.
And he's an assistant chief right now, so he's making that much money?
I did ask him.
But he's been with that department for decades.
I did ask him in an interview a minute, would a pay cut, would he consider it? He said he'd have to talk to his wife.
I don't, I don't think with Ford it's about money. He's coming to Tennessee regardless where he gets a fire chief or not.
Sorry?
His grandkids, so I don't think money's a factor for Mr. Ford, the conversation that I had with him. So it's not about the money with him.
Yeah, because he has a full pension from his retirement. But when you're still in your career and you've, you know, matriculated up through your service and your experience and your wages, you don't want to go backwards.
He's been in that position for 31 years.
Mr. Beaman now?
Yes.
We don't have a motion. Got a motion.
Got a motion, but I think the discussion's about the money now.
Amend your motion to put that salary amount in there?
Excuse me, Paige, I didn't hear you.
You want to add that salary amount in the motion?
Yes.
What are you adding in there, $128,000?
$125,000.
So he's going to be making more than the fire chief?
Police chief.
This is the fire chief.
The police chief, I'm sorry.
It's real close to what the police chief makes.
Go ahead and put him at the same pay while we're at it since their first line.
I don't mind that, but that might have cheap annual benefits.
You can't do that. I mean, you've got a 40-year parks director that don't make that kind of money. He's 40 years plus with the city. I mean, I understand you pay public service a little bit more, but, you know, I mean, for the years and years and years that we sit down here and hire department heads, we've always started them out at a couple of steps above that.
He left at $120-something. Remember, we had to do the same thing when we hired him, because again, he was coming from a large department, had been there making a lot of money, wasn't going to come here for less. And so we hired him at the time, I can't remember, maybe $115. By the time he left, it was probably like $123 or something like that.
Jimmy, what do you want to do?
I'll second your motion so we can discuss, but.
But I'd like to go back to.
We have a motion and a second for Chief Beaman at $125,000.
Did you say what I said?
What step is that?
Motion as far as raising Don up?
No, no, we can't do that this meeting. We can't. But that's something we need to look at.
We can't do that in this meeting. This is just one topic.
Right, that's something we can discuss, because I think that's something we need to discuss, yeah.
I'd like to see it start at about a step 12, which is right at $120,000.
Make a recommendation, let the mayor negotiate his salary.
We have a motion and a second for him at a salary, and so that's where we stand at this point.
So we're going to have, if this goes through, we're going to have an assistant coming in and make his merches more than the police chief. Is that correct?
I actually think the police chief, when we actually, his evaluation is past due. I think he's a target over that.
No, no, my question was, if this goes through, will the assistant fire chief that we're about to hire for fire chief be making more than the police chief? That's my question.
I don't, no, I don't think so. That's what I was answering, yeah.
Okay, so the motion.
And remember when we hired Chief Williams, he was making significantly more than the police chief. The next budget year came, and we did increase the police chief's pay to try and get some parity there, because remember when you hired the police chief many years ago, he had not yet, he completed his degree shortly after he was hired. It was an unusual hiring situation many years ago, but his salary had not reflected that. And so the year after we hired the fire chief, we actually did do an increase on the police chief.
So really, our step increases for those department heads doesn't really mean anything anymore, correct?
I disagree with that. I think we are certainly due for a pay study to kind of get realigned, but I think, you know, we're trying to retain people. There was support for doing that by this council, particularly with the police chief, because that is a high-profile job that's very important to every citizen's safety in the city.
I just find it ironic that the expert panel had Mr. Miller and Mr. Ford as the top-two candidate, but it seemed like we're overlooking Mr. Ford at this point and going to Mr. Beaman for, I don't know, for whatever reason.
Now, Mr. Miller couldn't get your support either.
I'm sorry?
I said Mr. Miller was overlooked as well by this council.
Well, I know, but I'm not talking about Mr. Miller. I was talking about Mr. Ford. But I understand what you're saying. Okay, my point's made.
Motion and a second, are you all ready to vote on that? Okay, again, if we're going in the direction of hiring a fire chief, I believe our city, our citizens, our fire department certainly all deserve for this council to get behind and show full support for whomever it is that we hire. So I'm asking Ms. Kettrell to call the roll for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Hello.
Councilman Fann?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
Councilman Overton?
No, for salary purposes only.
And Mayor Brown? Six yeses and two nos.
Council, I thank you. I understand the concerns about pay. Again, we are on a trajectory this year to do another pay study and see exactly where we are.
Paige, and, you know, I felt, I understand what Councilman Overton and John D. are referring to, but I feel that we can go ahead and move past this, and then we can go back and look at everybody's position, and I certainly would like to do that. I mean, there again, too, being a business owner now, not 38 years, but 39 years, I've never laid anybody off, and I've always given people raises, and I've always had a lot of people to stay with me, and I think that's for a reason, paying the people well. And I'm not saying we're not, but I'm certain in some areas we need to reevaluate some of that stuff, and I'd like to see that as a priority.
I agree. I think we need to look at.
Okay, and, well, just when you bring, yes, just to tell us, we're not supposed to be discussing that, and we're not, but when you bring people from the outside, you're always at their mercy is what they're going to be willing to take, to take the job. So I thank you all, council. I'm excited. I'll look forward to speaking with Chief Beaman and.
Please call as soon as possible.
Contacting you all, contacting you all with hopefully his confirmation that he can't wait to come to Gallatin and work with our amazing fire department.
What happens in the interim?
We can't discuss that actually tonight. The way that the code reads, the mayor will temporarily appoint someone until the next council meeting, so I will do that. I thank you all. No, I, we can't.
No, we can't do that tonight.
Motion to adjourn.
This is a specially-called meeting. We can only discuss.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all, everyone. Have a lovely evening. Good night. Yes.